Okay, if everyone could find their seats. We're going to go ahead and get started with our meeting this afternoon. First item on our agenda is our roll call. City Clerk.
The records shall reflect that all members are present with the exception of Mayor Ritter.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to have our Pledge of Allegiance and our invocation. So, our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Aguilara. And after that, if you would please remain standing for our invocation.
Please join me in honoring our nation's flag. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow your heads. Lord, give us a quiet mind and teach us to trust in Thee, knowing all things are in Thy hands. Guide us in being good spirits of the City of Vista and open our hearts and minds to receive great opportunities that will benefit all. Let our ears be open to receive all questions, observations, and complaints, and that we listen to the whole and return with the best answer for our city and the citizens residing here. We ask for all common good to come from this venue for everyone here today and in the future. This we ask in Jesus' name and in the religions of all represented here. Amen.
Thank you very much. That was Elisa Davey, founder of Garden of Innocence National. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Now, I would like to announce that in accordance with the Brown Act, as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. So, right now, we're going to go ahead with the approval of our agenda. Mr. City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you. There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
And for our closed session, there was no closed session scheduled earlier today. So, right now, we're going to go with our presentations. And if I could, please have Rob O'Donnell, Jonathan Lee, and Andrea McCullough meet myself and the City Council. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. And Natalie Jacobs, my apologies, to meet us down here in front, Council. Our first one is for Rob O'Donnell and Jonathan Lee. They both won, I think it was a tie, for this award, so we have a certificate for each of you. So, it says, "Whereas Rob O'Donnell and Jonathan Lee, GIS Coordinator and Information Technology Technician respectively, were recently both recognized as recipients of the 2015 City of Vista Mayor's Excellence in Service Award. And whereas both employees went above and beyond this year to support stormwater staff helping refine city work software queries and reports, a cumbersome project that was time-intensive and deadline-driven. Whereas Rob and Jonathan are both kind and clear in their approach of fellow employees, exhibiting exceptional patience and displaying a positive attitude despite occasional project setbacks. Both gentlemen regularly provide top-notch support to city staff, empowering employees so that they can conduct their work effectively and efficiently. Whereas the Vista City Council offers its sincere appreciation for Rob and Jonathan's leadership and dedication to the city's values of respect, fairness, teamwork, integrity, compassion, and stewardship. We congratulate them both on being named co-recipients of this year's Mayor's Excellence in Service Award. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 13th, to be Rob O'Donnell and Jonathan Lee Day in the City of Vista." So, congratulations, gentlemen. Our next one is for Andrea McCullough. You are all familiar with seeing Andrea at all of our City Council meetings. She does a great job not just here, and you'll hear where else. Whereas Andrea McCullough, Communications Officer, was recently recognized as the recipient of the City of Vista 2015 Manager of the Year. Andrea has led the city's efforts to enhance our organization's public image. Under Andrea's direction, we have streamlined our city branding, modernized our public outreach, social media and messaging, and updated our city logo. And whereas Andrea exemplifies the characteristics of a Manager of the Year, she is extremely dedicated and works meticulously to ensure the accuracy of facts prior to issuance of the press. Andrea quickly responds to inquiries from residents and the media, assists staff with the city website, and helps promote community events such as the Leadership Academy, Summerfest, and the Strawberry Festival City Booth. She also coordinates the city's social media and develops the citywide newsletter and recreation guide and develop, pardon me, among many of her other high-profile projects. Whereas virtually every department relies on Andrea and her expertise, she exhibits a truly thoughtful approach to challenges and looks for new ways to engage the community. Over the past year, Andrea has led the team that overhauled the city's website. She is currently designing a mobile application, and she updated a 15-plus-year-old city street poll banner program. Andrea's efforts make the city look modern and professional and help tell the story of an efficient and well-run organization. And whereas the Vista City Council offers its sincere appreciation for Andrea's leadership and dedication to the city's values of respect, fairness, teamwork, integrity, compassion, and stewardship, we congratulate her on being named Manager of the Year. Now therefore, the mayor and the members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim Thursday, April 14th, as Andrea McCullough Day in the City of Vista." This one is for Natalie Jacobs. Oh, there you are. Do you want to step forward? Okay. Sorry, I didn't. I'm getting the hang of it. Whereas Natalie Jacobs, Human Resource Coordinator, was recently recognized as the recipient of the City of Vista 2015 Employee of the Year Award. And whereas Natalie takes dedication and professionalism to its highest levels, she exemplifies leadership by positively influencing others within the organization. Natalie is always very approachable and confident in her abilities, often helping her coworkers resolve problems and suggesting processes to process improvements. And whereas in September, the Finance Department had a staffing shortage, Natalie immediately volunteered to step in and help the Finance Department during this vacancy period, making sure that every employee was paid timely while continuing her regular duties as HR Coordinator. When the Accounting Technician payroll position was filled, Natalie helped train the new employee. Natalie was also instrumental in ensuring that all federal and state reporting occurred reliably during this transition period. Whereas the Vista City Council offers its sincere appreciation for Natalie's leadership and dedication to the city's values of respect, fairness, teamwork, integrity, compassion, and stewardship, we congratulate her on being named Employee of the Year. Now therefore, the mayor and the members of the City Council do hereby proclaim Friday, April 15th, 2016, as Natalie Jacob Day in the City of Vista." So, I think we'll get together for a photo. I think Tony's going to do the photo for us. Does somebody want to help me hold these? So, now, we're going to move on with the certificates for our Vista Leadership Academy. And the City of Vista is very, very, very proud to present the 14th Vista Leadership Academy's graduating class. This academy provides insight to Vista residents on how the city operates and helps to provide a better understanding of the city's many responsibilities and functions. Our first academy was conducted in 2007. Proud graduate. That session was an overwhelming success, and every leadership academy has grown since that time. Congratulations to the Spring 2016 participants. Please come up as I call your name to receive your certificate, and please remain standing up here because we would like to do another group photo. So, first up, we have, we have the same list? Okay, making sure we have the same list. Sylvia Solis Daniels. Bonnie Glasgow. Jo Green. Michelle Herter. Angela Nugent. Tiffany Nugent. Darla Nyren. Karen Roth. And Mr. Titus also accepts the certificate on behalf of his wife, Mimi. So, at this time, we have a proclamation for the Women's Club of Vista. So, if I could have the representatives, we have Nancy Jones, Judy Pentazzo, Karen Hot, I'm, Rod, I'm so sorry. So, come on, come on down. I'll let you hold. Nancy is the current president, I believe.
Yes.
So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas the Women's Club of Vista, founded in 1916, is celebrating 100 years of service to our community. And whereas originally organized as the Women's Current Events Club, the club's adopted motto was 'Along the Friendly Way, We Journey Together to Achieve the Best Things for Country Life.'" Members of the club organized Vista's first library in 1931, marked El Camino Real with guidepost bells, and promoted Vista's first cleanup day. And whereas in 1927, after affiliating with the State and General Federation of Women's Clubs, members voted to change the name of their group to the Women's Club of Vista. They built a clubhouse in Vista in 1929, which served many purposes for the community over the years, including serving Camp Pendleton Marines during World War II as a canteen and service club. And whereas in 1959, the Women's Club of Vista outgrew its clubhouse, and in 1966, dedicated a new 7,100-square-foot clubhouse on Oak Drive. Whereas sponsored by the Women's Club in 1960, the Vista Junior Women's Club donated $1,000 toward the Bringle Terrace Park Amphitheater, installed a wooden sign for Bringle Terrace Park Playground, and paid for the first polio-shot vaccines for children at the local clinic. Whereas in 1980, the Women's Club began the first glass recycling service for Vista and created a hazardous household waste pamphlet, printed out and distributed to over 25,000 residents. In the 1990s, Keep America Beautiful and the United Nations Environmental Program both recognized the Women's Club of Vista for planting over 700 oak tree seedlings in our local parks. Whereas since the Women's Club of Vista sold their clubhouse on Oak Drive in 2005, the club has donated over $540,000, wow, to 56 designated nonprofit organizations, including those that assist children, women, families, youth, and veterans, as well as the Vista Fire Department and the San Diego County Sheriff Department. And whereas since 2005, the club has awarded $115,000 in scholarships, and this year will award scholarships to students graduating from Vista High School, Rancho Buena Vista High School, Guajome Park Academy, Mission Vista High School, Alta Vista High School, Major General Raymond Murray High School, and North County Trade Tech High School. And whereas, the Women's Club members gave more than 5,700 hours of volunteer service to local nonprofit organizations in 2015, including the Women's Resource Center, various elementary school libraries, and Penny's for Pines. The club contributed to building the Ponds and Stream Project at Alta Vista Gardens using funds from recycling, including funding a rose-covered gazebo, and has provided free nature field trips for the schoolchildren. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council congratulate the Women's Club of Vista on its 100-year anniversary and thank their members for their continued service and dedication to the community, and hereby proclaim Sunday, April 17th, 2016, as Women's Club of Vista Day in the City of Vista. Congratulations. Congratulations. Yes. Had to make sure I put all that paperwork away. That's awesome. Thank you so much, everybody, for what you do for our community. Every single thing that you do is another thread in the fabric that makes up Vista, and it's a wonderful fabric, and it's a wonderful city, so I thank you. So, now, we're going to be moving on to our consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the consent calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk or secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. And our City Clerk, Kathy Valdez, has a comment.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Rigby has asked for a change to the March 22 consolidated minutes. She would like the word "question" to be replaced with "request" in the first sentence of the last paragraph on page three. Thank you.
Thank you. So, do I have any speakers, any, nothing being pulled from the public? Council members, any items to be pulled? No? Okay, is there a motion? Thank you. Please vote. And that passes unanimously with the absence of Mayor Ritter. Moving on to our discussion items, items scheduled for discussion generally require detailed explanation by staff or the agency member that has requested the item. Tonight, we have two discussion items. D1, our Draft Fiscal Year 2016-2017 Capital Project Budget Review, and Community Development Director Mr. John Conley will be introducing this item. Mr. Conley.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council. This is a review of our Capital Improvement Program, otherwise known as the CIP. The budgeting for this is for the next fiscal year, and it's a five-year document, so we budget over a five-year period, but we only allocate funds for the next fiscal year. It's reviewed annually to determine what the council's priorities are, excuse me, with programming for future years based on our construction estimates and what the council's direction is. It includes a summary of funding sources and budgeted uses, as well as details for all the individual projects. So, first, I'll cover some achievements that we've accomplished in the past fiscal year, and then we'll talk about the monies that we're allocating for the next fiscal year. In the Parks and Rec area this year, we completed the pedestrian bridge over Agua Hedyonda Creek and Buena Vista Creek Restoration, which is a trail project that's going to be completed before the end of the fiscal year at a cost of $1.24 million. For Streets Project, we're in the process of completing our Slurry Seal, which is a biennial project every two years. This year, we've done 4 million square feet, as well as completing the SR 78 eastbound off-ramp at Sycamore and sidewalk improvements at various locations, including Sycamore between Watson and Green Oak. Traffic projects, we're just finishing up our downtown intersection improvements, which include intersections at Vista Village and Santa Fe, Civic Center in Vista Village and Eucalyptus at Civic Center. These are all improvements that we're putting in as part of the Paseo-Santa Fe project and their widening of intersections, and we should complete all the striping for those projects in the next month. We completed a Safe Routes to School master plan, some intersection improvements at Mona Vista Drive, and raised median and fencing at Mona Vista Drive next to the elementary school. One of our largest accomplishments in this past year is the opening of Paseo-Santa Fe. This included Phase 1 of the design, which basically runs from Main Street down to Ocean View. The construction of that project is going to be complete within the next couple months before the end of the fiscal year. We are also budgeting for design for Phases 2 and 3 and have construction money planned for Phase 2, so the next phase of the project will hopefully start within the next year as well. We completed the Buena Vista Sanitation, I'm sorry, the Buena Sanitation and Vista Sewer Projects, including rehabilitation of a culvert running under Business Park Drive at a cost of $850,000, and a pipeline rehabilitation for various segments of the district at a cost of $1 million. So, for the next fiscal year, we have identified in this slide the expenditures from this fiscal year totaling a little over $15 million. The appropriation for the next fiscal year is about $19 million. About $9 million of that you can see is in the sewer funds for Vista and Buena, and I'll cover those projects, as well as a fair amount of money in the Housing Fund, which is dedicated to affordable housing. The rest is split between parks, public facilities, and Streets Projects. So, some grants that we've acquired this year that we'll be using in the next one to two fiscal years include $5.7 million that we received for Paseo-Santa Fe. This is through the Sandag Smart Growth Improvement Grant, as well as their Active Transportation Program grant, and we were awarded both of those this year, so we'll be using that money in the next phase of Paseo-Santa Fe. We'll be doing a traffic signal project for $250,000. This is a new project that we'll be putting in at Bo Beir and North Anza, right near Faith Lutheran School and the Mobile Home Park there off of North Anza. This is a safety improvement that we'll be using our traffic impact fee local funds for. We schedule $150,000 a year for pedestrian mobility sidewalk projects. Over the five-year period of the CIP, we budgeted $550,000. This is money that we use for sidewalk projects to come up as needed, whether they're accessibility-driven or safe routes to school. The most recent one that we completed was between Watson and Green Oak on the west side of Sycamore, which was a missing segment for a very long time. Our next project will be a safe route, an accessibility project in the vicinity of Bo Beir Elementary. Another new project is a public parking lot, which we've discussed, on South Citrus off of Broadway. Would include the demolition of two existing buildings and the installation of a new parking lot with lighting, landscaping, and stormwater improvements on that site. There's $1 million budgeted for that based on the year-end fund balance from this past year. Buena Sanitation District is proposing improvements to its yard down in the Shatter Ridge area. It's shown in the overhead here with the red highlight. This is a facility that was formerly used for water treatment, and it's been shuttered, so the city's looking at improving it for other uses and making the most out of their Some ongoing projects that I'll cover quickly, there's a number of the ongoing projects that are in the CIP. I'm really only highlighting projects that we're adding funding to, but I'll be happy to answer any questions about existing projects that are in the capital budget. Within the park system, we anticipate completing installing restrooms at three parks by the end of this summer for $130,000. We're starting design on the Buena Creek Trail, which runs next to the shopping center down at the intersection of Shatter Ridge and Sycamore along Buena Creek. And we're looking at upgrades to Bob Williamson Park, and that design is underway right now to renovate that park with some different uses at a $1.7 million price tag. Within the housing budget, we've got $4.3 roughly million for affordable housing projects, which Mr. Meyer is working on RFP for another affordable housing project along Paseo-Santa Fe. For traffic, we anticipate receiving about $2.3 million in transnet funding in the next fiscal year. That's an annual allocation. We use that money typically in construction and overlay projects. Construction is where we're reconstructing the street because it's damaged so poorly. Slurry Seal is overlay, maintaining your existing streets. We're going to put some money into Paseo-Santa Fe Phase 2, which is the next phase of the project, and a small amount into sidewalks and continuing our pavement management program. On the sewer side, we'll be paying our share of the Encina wastewater budget in both the Vista and Buena districts. We have a project in the Vista District that will receive some additional funding. That's the Hacienda Drive trunk sewer line rehabilitation. And in Buena, we have some projects, including odor control rehab of small diameter pipeline and the yard improvements that I mentioned. And that completes my presentation of projects that we've completed and that we had planned for the next fiscal year. The intent of the meeting tonight was just to provide you an overview of what we're looking at in the CIP. We'll bring the formal budget back later in the year for adoption, but we wanted to get the council's input on what we've budgeted for and any anticipated needs that we haven't budgeted for that we might need to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. I see Councilman Aguilara.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, I'm going through your slides here. One of them was the project categories and total funding. And on traffic signals, it says zero. So, just want some explanation on that, what that means, I guess, because I'm not understanding. Because I know I did see something on traffic signal going in on Bo Beir and Anza. So, I have questions about that, too, but.
So, we do have a traffic signal going in. That money at Bo Beir and Anza, I believe that money's coming out of the Streets allocation in this next year's appropriation. We had a.
Part of the 2.6?
Correct. We had a separate traffic signal account that we used to collect fees for that was per our old traffic fees, because they collected signal and Streets money differently. per our old traffic fees, because they collected signal and Streets money differently. Now it's all in one account, traffic impact fees, and we take signal and road improvement monies out of that same account.
Okay. So out of the 2.6, and maybe the details will be coming later, but I know City Council top priorities, you know, we were there. Traffic congestion is a huge concern for most citizens in Vista. What do we, how much of that is being dedicated to that, other than just road, you know, repair and that type of thing?
The primary traffic congestion improvements that we're doing right now are the downtown intersection improvements that we're doing as a result of the Paseo project. You know, it reduced the width of the street, so it pushed some traffic in some different areas that we're widening intersections to accommodate. Beyond that, in this next fiscal year, we don't really have any major congestion improvements. Those are typically widening projects that either are, you know, long segments that require significant funding, or at specific intersections that we've identified as priority. We intend to come back to the council to have a discussion item on traffic or a workshop on traffic and talk about where we want to prioritize spending those dollars in the future. What we've really focused on in this CIP budget is the Paseo project and finishing that, you know, piece of it. Most of our staff time will be probably focused on that, but as a next priority, we can get into the traffic improvements elsewhere in town.
And as part of the next session, next goal-setting discussion that we have, based from your March discussion, we will present goals that reflect traffic improvement and have that discussion, as Mr. Conley said, on the workshop.
Okay.
Back before you.
So, okay, so then getting back to Bo Beere and Anza. So it just doesn't seem like, I do that crossing quite often, as you know, and it doesn't seem like it needs, I don't know, the traffic signal there just doesn't make sense to me. I mean, has there been a lot of accidents there?
I asked Mr. Hossin about this today. There has been some accident history there. It is a fairly dangerous intersection, just based on the speed of cars that are coming both ways on Bo Beere, and, you know, there's some curvature of the road, so the sight distance isn't the greatest. So it's a safety consideration that the city engineer feels is the next highest priority on our signal list. If the council doesn't want to put a signal there, that's at their discretion.
I guess I can have that discussion with Sam.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council on the budget? Seeing none, is that direction? Thank you very much.
Mayor, yes.
Moving on to item D2, the proposed general plan amendment and zone change on South Melrose Drive, south of Sunset Drive, APN 169-180-30. Our Community Development Director, Mr. Conley, will also introduce this item.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is a request by an interested developer for a proposed general plan amendment and zone change on South Melrose Drive. The project location is shown on the slide here. It's on the west side of South Melrose, south of Sunset Drive, north of Cannon. It's just north of the Ralph Shopping Center there. The city boundary is shown in blue, so it wraps around the site, and it's at the southern tip of the city's property adjacent to Oceanside. The parcel number is shown there, 169-180-30. This is a vacant property, undeveloped. It's about 1.9 acres. It's got a slope topography that follows the general topography of the street, descending from north to south. It's also got somewhat of a dip in the center of the site. There was a professional office project that was submitted on the property in 2001, but never made it to final approval. The property is currently designated commercial neighborhood in our general plan, which is a retail designation and Zone C1. It allows for various retail uses, professional office, a number of special uses, gas station, that kind of thing. The proposal is asking to build a mini-storage facility on the site, which would require a general plan change to general commercial, that allows a more intensive commercial use, and the zoning to C2, which allows a mini-storage with a special-use permit. This is the drawing that was submitted by the interested party, Trico Capital Investments. I understand they're here this evening, and they can address any questions the council may have related to their proposal. They've essentially submitted a preliminary concept for 133,000-square-foot storage facility in two separate buildings that would have driveway access directly onto South Melrose Drive. This item was scheduled for discussion following Councilman Campbell's request on March 8. All the property owners within 500 feet of this property were notified of this discussion item tonight with a mailer, and staff is requesting the council's direction regarding the proposal for a general plan and zone change on this property, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. We do have some speakers on this item. Do you have any questions for staff before we hear from speakers? Okay. So we're going to take some speakers, and I just want to remind you that you have three minutes to speak. The black box on the podium here will light up green. When it turns yellow, you have 30 seconds. When it's red, we ask that you complete your sentence, and we'll move on to the next speaker. So our first speaker this evening on this item is Mr., is it Mike Rolfs?
Hi, my name is Mike Rolfs. I'm the applicant. And since our last meeting, we did have an open house at the property, and we invited all of the neighbors to there. We've met with most of the, we went with all the neighbors who attended. We had a good turnout. The response from everybody was positive, and the three things that were kind of the takeaway that they liked was the fact that the facility would buffer the noise from Melrose Avenue. It would reduce the transient traffic that they currently have across the site, and it seems that there is an apparent demand for the use. So I'm here, I'm available for any questions if I can further help explain the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Elizabeth Reagan. And after Ms. Reagan will be Stephanie Jackal.
Hello there, and thank you for being here tonight. My name is Elizabeth Reagan, and I have lived in Vista for 18 years, and I have passed that piece of land for 18 years. And I don't want to say it looks weird, but it's just, just a really weird piece of land. It's not a flat piece of land. I taught in Oceanside for 28 years, and, you know, I would pass that piece of land again and would love for it to be used for self-storage, because that means I could drive that part of Melrose, getting fast food or going to Ralph's, and could put self-storage right there, right behind Ralph's, so I could, you know, drop stuff off and then go shopping at Ralph's. It just, you know, I know that these places are all over the place, but I would appreciate one close to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, councilmembers and deputy mayor. Stephanie Jackal, 1500 Green Oak Road. I really don't have an opinion one way or the other. I just have a couple of questions. I see that all access to the site will be from Melrose, so I'm presuming it's not going to impact, oops, the neighbors who are behind it. My other question is about the noise impact on the neighbors. Do we know anything about that? Will there be some kind of screening?
Mr. Conley, can you address that, please?
This is really a preliminary proposal at this point, to look at the potential for the land use change. If the council supports it by majority, then we would provide direction to the applicant to submit their formal application. It would have to go through review at the staff level to determine all those issues, and it would go to the Planning Commission for a final decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackal. Our next speaker is Al Aduso. I don't know if I said that correctly.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Hard to read. And then after that will be Val Brown.
Hi, my name's Al Apuzo. I'm with Lean Associates. I'm actually the listing broker on this parcel of land. I've been a land broker for 20 years and have had this particular listing for in excess of three years at this point. In general, I think if the city wants to see this parcel developed, this is a great opportunity for that. Over the last three-plus years, we've really had almost no activity on the site. You could say maybe it's an issue of price, but it's not. The ownership has been extremely reasonable in their pricing expectations and have actually reduced the price on numerous occasions to get to a price point where I think we realize as brokers that price is not the issue. And the city actually has a parcel directly across the street from this site that's priced, I think, per square foot and at least twice as much as this particular parcel. I think the general lack of interest can be summarized by three issues. One's topography. There's a topography issue on the site. The dimensions are extremely long and thin, as you can see by this particular drawing. And the zoning, although currently it allows retail and office, I was actually in the retail development world for quite some time, and this is not what we would call a A or even a B retail site. It's mid-block, it's long and thin. Most national tenants would not go in this location, and even some local and more regional-type tenants would find it difficult to survive in a mid-block center of this type. Office rents in Class B and C centers in the area right now, they just don't justify new development. So for the time being, I think that there's an opportunity for the city to see a project developed here, and, you know, as the broker, I would support a change to allow a self-storage use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. A group of us were having coffee the other day, and we, believe it or not, we're looking at the council agenda. I know it sounds kind of strange, but we're interested in all things Vista, and I'm trying to learn a little bit more about how this city works, so please forgive me if I'm asking questions that have obvious answers. We just, we're curious. So I guess my first, the first question that did come up is for Councilman Campbell, why you wanted to champion this? We weren't really clear why you suggested this change to the general plan. We were curious about the need for this. I understand that they stated the need, but I didn't see any, anything in the staff report that was quantitative, saying, "We have so many units, we need so many more." One of the things we're trying to understand about the general plan and how zoning gets put into place. If at the time, neighborhood commercial was appropriate for this, and it was approved, the gentleman that just spoke said that this really wasn't appropriate zoning for this piece of land. So we're just trying to understand how those decisions get made. Is there any data supporting this change? I was at the meeting where this request came forward, and John, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn for you, but I did not get the sense that staff supported this. So we were just trying to figure out what the justification for the change is. We also looked at this, there's other places where there's C2 zoning in the city, and we didn't know if that would be more appropriate than taking neighborhood commercial away, which is potential tax revenue. It didn't seem like the increase in property tax, $15,000 a year, was that significant? And so we were curious about, is this really a good idea for Vista? And I'm just asking these questions. We're trying to understand how, why the general plan, which was approved in 2012, is being amended, it seems like, quite a bit? And what criteria was used then in 2012? Why isn't it valid four years later? And the other question we had, and I couldn't tell from this drawing if there's one or two driveways. The staff report said two, and we were curious about traffic impact to Melrose, because once you're coming down the hill on South Melrose through Sunset, I commuted that way to and from work every day for a good 10, 11 years, and that traffic flows really, really fast there. So I'm not sure what kind of, would there be an apron, something to create a safe way for people to get on and off? And I guess my other question is, why now? And is this the right thing for Vista? Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kim Cameron.
Hi, I'm Kim Cameron, and I live directly across the street from where this proposed site is, and I'm all for it, because there is problems with people walking through and loitering and stuff, and I'm all for it. And I don't think the noise will be bad, because it will block. So I just want to say, I'm all for it. And I've lived there for 47 years, so...
Okay. Thank you very much. So with no other public speakers, we'll turn to City Council. Councilman Campbell.
Thank you. So a couple of things about this particular project. First off, we have to separate that this item is a zone change direction, not project approval, and the applicant has not submitted an application formally for a project. This is a preliminary potential design that would go on that project as an idea. So I brought that item forward as a discussion item, not in necessarily favor or opposed to his own change, but merely to give direction to staff at the last meeting where this was discussed, because historically, the council had previously given direction not to be very positive towards self-storage-type projects. So staff, is my understanding, had a predisposition to not support those types of projects based on prior direction of the council. This particular project location is a property that, when I looked at it, and I've driven by there many, many times over the years, is a site that, in my opinion, does not support retail. And I think most people in the industry would tell you that it is an absolutely horrible location or site for developing a retail center. And for the neighborhood, it would generate significantly more traffic than a self-stored center would. For the neighbors that are adjacent and closer to South Melrose, it would act, I think, as a noise barrier. There's been encampments on the site that I've seen personally, a lot of transient activity on the site, crossings. So I think from the neighborhood perspective, we heard from a couple of them tonight, this would be a positive improvement for that location. What that final project actually is, that would come before the Planning Commission and potentially the council again at some point in the future. This is a general plan zone change. To address the question from one of the speakers, why we have general plan amendments, Mr. Conley, maybe you could tell me, we're actually limited, correct, with how many amendments that we can make? Or maybe the city attorney? How many general plan amendments within a time period we can make? Is that correct?
I don't believe we're limited as a charter city from making amendments to the general plan.
Okay. But we've been very judicious and limited in the number of general plan amendments that we've made. I know a couple of years ago, we made some because of a rezone from a commercial to a mixed-use residential. Those businesses had trouble obtaining financing for some of their property improvements, so we rezoned that. So there are the occasional mistakes that slip through the long process of adopting a general plan. As much work and as energy goes into that, sometimes sites like this, I think, miss out on development opportunities that are beneficial to the community because they're overlooked, and there wasn't a request for a change when that general plan was going forward. So I think this particular parcel, based on its topography, the difficult nature of development, the shape, and the fact that it would result in a very limited impact with traffic to South Melrose, much more limited than an office complex or... with traffic to South Melrose, much more limited than an office complex or a retail center would, I'm in favor of the zoning change request that's been brought forward.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Aguilera?
Yeah, mine's just more of a question. The properties that surround this property, is there any other commercial property around it? Or, I mean, it seems to me, to the north, there's residential property. I think it is actually agriculture, right?
It's all residential within the city surrounding the site. There's commercial property across the street, and south of it is the City of Oceansides Park.
But nothing that could be combined to make this a more viable piece of property?
Not without involving a residential property, a residential home with it, which would involve rezoning that property as well.
Rezoning that property. Okay. Thank you.
I just have a quick question to go back to one of the speakers' questions, just for clarification, Mr. Conley. In 2012, the general plan was revised, and now we're asking for a revision amendment on this one. And the question was raised, what's the criteria for determining a zone designation for a parcel? So, I guess that would be my question. When we looked at this particular parcel previously, why was it considered commercial versus what we're asking for now?
When we updated the general plan in 2012, we, for the most part, left the land uses in place that were there prior, with the exception of some specific areas. The downtown area, the mixed-use zone, some of the areas around the courthouse, some areas of the business park, were focused on in terms of creating opportunities for putting housing near jobs or putting housing near transit. That was the intent primarily. The zoning on this property was commercial before we did the update in 2012. We didn't go back and look at the zoning on every single parcel and think about what was best for that parcel or best for the city. It was really just more focused on specific areas, trying to incorporate some smart growth concepts into the plan of developing our future housing around transportation and jobs. That was really the major focus. As far as changes to the plan, there's no magic formula, in my opinion. I think it's about doing what we're doing tonight, which is bringing it before the council, notifying the community, having a discussion and determining what we collectively think is best for the city, and that's really what we're trying to get from the council tonight.
Okay. And then, the current owner, it was, obviously, this was the zoning designation when he purchased this property. And has he tried to, how many times do you, are you aware of that he's been approached by anybody wanting to build here prior to this project?
I'm only aware of the one application that came in 2001. That's probably a question that the broker could answer if you want an answer to that question.
I would, if the broker wouldn't mind coming back. And I have an additional question as well, just to get some history on the property and the owner, if you don't mind. So, my question was, you said that you've been representing this property for three years now. In that timeframe that you've been representing it and previously in the history that you're aware of, how many projects has this owner brought forth or considered previously to the storage unit project?
I think one. I think in 2001, they brought an office project forward. They, I don't know how far they got with their plans. I know, I've seen architectural design for a project, but since then, they have, there's been no projects brought forward. The family is a local family trust here in Vista, and the patriarch of the family passed away a couple of years ago. It's now been inherited by the collection of children, siblings, and relatives, and they have no, they have no experience developing the property and really have no intent on doing anything. But for the last, I would say, nearly 10 years, maybe, maybe even a little longer than that, it's been on the market, on and off. In my tenure as the listing broker, I think Mike Rolfe's project is the first one that's been brought forth and really the only offer that was made in the last three years.
Do you know how long the family has owned that property?
It's been, I would say, 20 years, plus or minus.
Okay. Thank you for coming back and answering my question. I appreciate it. Councilman Franklin?
I would just register my support of the zone change, and my reasoning being, even through up economies, over the last 20 years, we haven't had a proposal to build retail. There's vacant retail at the Ralph Center, which is just barely a neighbor by the tip of the triangle. There's vacant retail at the Albertson Shopping Center. There's vacant retail on both sides across the street. There is a lot of, and has been for the last 13 years that I've been living and working in South Vista, ample available space to open a retail establishment. I just don't think that, unless there's a lot more housing growth in that area, and we all know that we're constrained land-wise, and that's not really incredibly likely. So, you know, I'm just not sure how much more retail that area is really going to be able to meaningfully support. So, in terms of the idea of holding the land and hopes for a future retail installation, I think more likely would be full use of our existing retail before this is going to be a necessity. That said, having not heard one resident come forward to oppose the project on the grounds that they think it's a detriment to the community, and having heard the local property owners say that they think it would actually benefit them, and believing that the property owner has a right to the best and highest use of his property, I can see no reason to stand in the way of the zoning change.
Thank you.
Councilman Aguilera?
After listening to my fellow council members' comments, I think I'd have to agree with them for a couple of reasons. One, I see a lot of retail that is vacant as well, and the other part of this is that if there's no property to expand this property, there's no way, without getting into the residential property, I just don't see this as something that is going to get developed anytime soon. And the one thing I do like about, I know we're not talking about the project right now, but I think it sounds like it's going to go that direction, probably the least impact to the neighbors there, and there are some neighbors here who find it favorable, and I think that's probably best for the community. So, I'll support it.
Councilman Campbell?
Does staff want a motion on this item or just direction?
I think we've received adequate direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, well, with no further comments on that, we're going to go ahead and move into our public hearing. This is a public hearing to receive comment on the city's list of transportation projects eligible to use transportation sales tax or TransNet funds. The public hearing is now open. Community Development Director Conley will introduce this item.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is the Regional Transportation Improvement Program update for TransNet funding. As the deputy mayor identified, this is Sandag's program for major arterials and transit improvement monies. They use this as their budget, similar to our CIP budget. We receive an annual allocation of a half-cent sales tax from Sandag based on our population and road mileage, so programming of that. This slide shows the five-year projection for Sandag monies that we receive. From 2017 through 2021, we'll get about $12 million. It's a little bit more than $2 million a year. Vista currently has 11 projects that are on the RTIP list for our jurisdiction. We're proposing adjustments to five of those, and we're adding one. I'll be happy to answer any specific questions about the projects. Sandag also is requiring the city to participate in the Regional Arterial Management System, which is maintenance of the system to oversee signal timing and monitor trafficals, traffic signal status regionally. And so, we're also budgeting $8,800 in this fiscal year for that program. So, the reason this continues to show up on our agenda is that Sandag requires we have a public hearing every, anytime we want to amend the list, so you see it a couple times a year. This is our semi-annual, I guess I'd call it, update, so we're asking the council to adopt the resolution amending our RTIP budget for this year. And that completes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. I have no speakers. Pardon? No, I was asking if there were any public speakers. No. So, seeing no public speakers, we're going to go with council. So, Councilman Franklin?
What is the, I see status is listed as no change for the very first item, Sycamore Off-Ramp from SR 78. What exactly does no status or no change mean? Where are we at with that?
We're almost finished with that project, so we're not changing the allocation that we had in the last update or asking for any additional funds.
You say we're almost finished with it?
Yes.
Oh, oh, okay. I, the one, yeah, okay, going the other direction. What about, what about the other off-ramp coming the other way, which doesn't need to be widened, but needs, I guess because it's not the road surface, we can't use any of this money for that, can we?
We could potentially use this money for it, but we usually let Caltrans improve their facilities rather than spending city money that we could use elsewhere on our local roads. So, in the particular situation of the off-ramp at Sycamore, we got a grant to widen that to provide some congestion relief for the businesses in the business park. After doing that and undergoing what was, I believe, to be a torturous process with Sandag, we would rather let Caltrans make their improvements to the right-of-way themselves.
Yeah, but.
Pardon me for interrupting. I think Mr. Johnson has something to add to that.
No, I was just going to say a torturous process with Caltrans, not so much Sandag.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I said Cal, I said Sandag. I meant Caltrans. That was a.
It was a rather difficult process.
Yeah, it was, we struggled. Let's put it that way.
We could use cleanup, beautification, I don't know, improvement, whatever, on several of our off-ramps. I'm thinking of getting off at Civic Center on the westbound ramp, getting off on the westbound ramp on Sycamore. And we've, we've had this discussion before about waiting for Caltrans to do its job, but they're not doing it. How many years are we going to wait? It's an eyesore, and it really is the gateway. When you're coming from the east, you get off on Sycamore, it's the gateway into our city. Civic Center is also a gateway. All of our off-ramps from 78 are gateways into our city. And, you know, we've got dead tree, there's been, dead tree, it's been fallen over for the last two months, and nobody comes by. It's, you know, it's, it's just feet away from the right-of-way. Nobody comes by to clean it up. There's trash, you know. Why do we tolerate that? Why do we tolerate, just because it's somebody else's job?
So, excellent question.
Yeah.
When I was referring to the city's improvements that we just finished, it was a widening project, so capacity, not a beautification project, which you're referring to. A lot of jurisdictions have chosen to spend their own traffic improvement money on beautification of their freeway off-ramps. It's something the city of Vista could certainly do if the council supports that.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that it'd be a million-dollar project, but, I mean, it'd sure be nice if we could at least occasionally get the trash picked up so that we don't, you know, have a trash heap welcoming people into the city. I really feel strongly about this. We had a conversation, you know, before, where we listened to some residents that were on, I forget which commission dinner it was, we talked about this, and the council heard comments from folks that feel the same way. I'd really like to see us make that a priority, and, you know, and I'm not just favoring the Sycamore exit. Everywhere where you get off where Caltrans has abandoned its job, we're spending a lot of money, a lot of money, to beautify the city. And I think that we are really paying a price for having neglected these off-ramps because they are really an eyesore. And I just am going to make this point as often, as frequent as I can. We really need to do something, and even a modest effort would make an incredible difference. You know, just getting rid of the dead vegetation on it every, you know, six months would be enormous, and picking up the trash on a monthly basis. I don't know what it takes to do that, but I would really like to see, and I don't know when the right time to bring that up, other than put it as an agenda item, but we've talked about it and talked about it, and, you know, do I need to make an agenda item out of that?
No, I don't think you do. As part of the goal-setting session, that was item number, one component of item number three, and so, we will be coming back to you with action items to engage Caltrans, and I think that'll start that process for you.
I would say we've been talking about engaging Caltrans, writing them a letter. We've been speaking about that for some time. Can we, can we get an agreement with them, at least, you know, write a letter to them, ask them, I don't, you know, whatever, whatever step number one is, can we, can we take step number one in the next 60 days? That'd be something we could commit to? Even if it's just writing a letter to ask, you know, when they can step up their, their maintenance schedule?
We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Campbell?
I was just going to say thank you to staff for making these adjustments, and, you know, I definitely, Councilmember Franklin, I understand your concerns. It's regrettably a little bit more complicated than just going out and picking up the trash in Caltrans right-of-way, but I think that staff has done a great job over the last few years of making significant improvements on some of our off-ramps, especially the center median on Vista Village exit. That looks so much better than it did 10 years ago. Sometimes, things don't happen overnight. Unfortunately, it takes time. And we're, if you go back even in the last three and a half years, four years, we've made a lot of improvements beautification-wise with our off-ramps. So, if there's, I don't know if there's any other comment, but I would make a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the council resolution.
We do have one speaker, Mr. Fleming.
Tom Fleming, Vista resident for a long, long time. Got a question and a comment, actually. You brought up about the Councilman Franklin, the owning off-ramps, and I know that Emerald has got a tree that's right there at that off-ramp, just to comment on that. And facetiously, maybe we do the work and send them the bill, you know, so. But anyway, my, to get the real question I had, that I noticed when I looked at this stuff, was on Vista 49, 8252 up here, Olive Overpass study. That could be a situation that we've looked at from many years ago when they first started talking about the Sprinter, that I, it shows on your report that it's deleted, not just no changes, but it shows that that was, it's got deleted on the one on the website. And so, I was concerned about that because I believe that, done correctly, that could alleviate a lot of problems that we have traffic-wise in that major, major intersection right there at Santa Fe and Vista Village. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilman Campbell, did I not release your name? Do you have another comment?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Aguilera?
Are we going to look into that?
So, we do, we do have money still budgeted to evaluate the Olive Avenue Overpass. It's been delayed, not deleted, so that's what was identified in the.
Yeah, we just had this conversation, I think, Monday.
We haven't really initiated the study yet because the staff focus on other things, but at the council's behest, we can certainly speed that up.
Okay. Thank you.
I might add that even when the study's done, completion of a project like that is probably in excess of $15 million, so it won't be an easy go.
Okay, we have no further speakers, and Councilman Campbell had closed the public hearing and made a motion. Was there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll cast our votes. That measure passes unanimously with the mayor Ritter being absent. Thank you very much, Mr. Conley. So, now, we are on to oral communications, and I do not have any speaker slips for oral communications. So, we'll go on to remarks from city council. Oh, okay. We have one. We have one speaker, Mr. J.C. Nguyen.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and council and staff. I come to today as a happy piston, that we have our Paseo-Santa Fe project underway, and my personal opinion is that it looks good. And I just wrote a few things that I like to say because I've been hearing and reading and seeing, and it just breaks my heart, but I said I was going to come here tonight to report on yet another excellent Easter egg hunt that we had at Bringle Terrace Park on March the 26th, and Councilman Aguilar showed up, and it turned out to be another, the sixth in a row, getting bigger and better. I think pretty soon we might have to get into the amphitheater because we're getting so big, but then I had to turn my attention to the Paseo-Santa Fe sign fiasco that we got going on. I'd like to have a couple of words that says positive and negative, or happy and sad, or informed or uninformed. I'd like to take this time to try to help all the people out there in the World Wide Web land that have been moaning about our new Paseo-Santa Fe sign that won us a sour, a sweet and sour raspberry award in our new, our San Diego paper over the weekend. I'd like to give a little education on the topic so that our good citizens might be better under, might better understand. This is a destination sign for our Paseo-Santa Fe project, okay? The project is designed to take the blighted area of our fine city and revitalize it into a tourist destination, the likes of the Gaslamp, or Hillcrest, or Little Italy, and all the nice signs. It's not San Diego, but it's a destination sign. This is only phase one, that planned before our great recession hit. It survived budget cuts and numerous other hurdles to get to the stage that we are at today. The time for naming that sign was many moons ago, and perhaps even before some of you up there on the council even lived in Vista. The residents of Vista were asked for their input and suggestions, and with all that information, the sign was born. Negativity only hurts your soul, and to see such a good thing for Vista, get the scorn of a vocal minority only leads me to believe the voices need more knowledge on the subject matter to be better informed. A welcome Vista sign would be a great thing, be best representative or fine city on a street like Vista Way or Civic Center Drive, but 200 yards off of Vista Way onto Santa Fe is not really the right place for Welcome to Vista. So I ask for all the naysayers to stay in touch with our city, so when the time comes to raise the money and design the new Welcome to Vista sign, everybody will be on the same page, and the situation that we're in now of not knowing and being surprised by a sign might not happen in the future, so. All right? Thank you so much for your time, and I think our Vista is moving right along. Our Vista's moving right along. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, having no further public speakers, we're going to go ahead with council member comments. We'll start here with Councilman Aguilara.
Thank you, J.C. Yeah, I think this week was a great week for the City of Vista, and alls I'll say, and we are going to talk about this in the future, alls I'll say is, I'm glad people are paying attention. Obviously, great things are happening in Vista, that that many people would actually pay attention, so I think it's a positive. Thank you.
No comments this evening.
Councilman Franklin?
No comments.
Mr. City Manager?
Just two comments. One, that the summer edition of our Vista magazine has been sent out to all residents and businesses, and we will be holding a ceremonial groundbreaking for the two new skate parks coming up very shortly. We'll announce the date hopefully next week.
Excellent. Mr. City Manager, or Attorney, sorry?
No comments. Thank you.
And City Clerk? Okay. So I have a couple of reminders here. A free smartphone class is being held at 10:00 a.m. on Friday, April 15th, at the Gloria McClellan Center, located at 1400 Vale Terrace Drive. The class is for intermediate and advanced users who want to learn more complex topics. You can register by calling 760-643-5288. Registration for summer camp begins this Monday, April 18th, at 9:00 a.m. Wow, summer camp already. It's gone by so fast. The summer camps all include a field trip and runs, run through June 6th through August the 12th. Register online at vistasrecreation.com or at the Jim Porter Recreation Center located in Bringle Terrace Park. San Diego Creek to Bay cleanup is on April 23rd from 9:00 a.m. to noon. The City of Vista is hosting a cleanup at Buena Creek. Details and registration are online at creek2bay.org. It's time to begin planning for this Strawberry Festival run on May 29th. There is something for everyone, the 5K, 10K, and a kids' run. Register online at strawberry5000.com. So those are my comments, except to say thank you once again to staff for all of the work that you do for the city. You also add to the fabric that makes up the fabric, the blanket that we have in our community that just, we say thank you to you and salute you, and thank you to everyone who is still here. So with that, our meeting is adjourned. Have a fabulous Wednesday.